Committee in the hole. For US 52 PEL study.
Yes ma'am.
Please introduce yourself.
Sure. All right, good morning. I'm Molly Stewart. That's Raff Consulting. I'm here representing Mindat and Goodhue County on the US 52 PEL study.
And good morning. I'm Tom Austin. I'm the project manager with Mindat. It's working with Molly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we just have a short presentation here to give you update on the US 52 PEL study. So just a reminder that the corridor study limits are from Highway eight in Hater to Highway 60 in Zambroda. Our study process includes defining a comprehensive purpose and need statement, identifying and evaluating alternatives, and then developing a vision and implementation plan that will receive FHWA support and paves the way for a future NEPR process. So currently, right now, we're working towards concurrence point three, which is developing and evaluating the alternatives. We're hoping to have some alternatives. We presented alternatives to the public in June and then are working on evaluating them right now. And we'll have more refined, reduced number of alternatives present later this year, and then hoping to wrap up the study in early part of 2024 with ideally two to three alternatives that we can then carry forward into the NEPR process. So we won't actually get down to a one singular alternative that can't be completed as part of a PEL study, but we will get down to a reduced number that will help us streamline the NEPR process in future terms. So. And as I noted, we are planning for some final round of engagement later this year or early next year. I will note that this study is being guided by a project management team consisting of representatives from the townships, Mineola and Wanamango, the cities of Zambroda, and then Goodhue County as well. And then we also have representatives from Mindat District six. And then we also have a project advisory committee that includes a wider net of representatives, including Commissioners Greseff and Anderson, who are serving on the PAC committee. And then we also have an additional representatives from Mindat Metro. And then we also have representatives from the school board and the emergency services.
Yep, sure. Well, I see this goes down a little bit past Zambroda. I guess I'm just asking whether or not is anyone from Prairie Island involved in any of these discussions? Now that their new land is down just out of Pine Island. But just because it may affect them as well, I'm just asking.
Not directly, but we do have the townships involved. So but Mindat District six is involved as well. So that is a good.
They are looked in in the sense of they do, they are provided a review of the of the purpose and need statement and all the documents. So the tribal engagement is being done, but they're not directly sitting at the table in the PAC. No.
It's not actually going past.
It's not. Yeah, there it goes to 58. It goes to the 60 west interchange.
All right.
That's where the study stops. Yeah. So we're quite a bit north of the property they have down by Pine Island.
Well, I do know that they are really would like to plan a very large housing development. So I guess I'm just thinking that if you're incorporating a whole bunch of new homes with new traffic and other part of the reservation is here, perhaps if they're not at the table, we could at least let them know what is happening.
Yep.
Yep. We have been, as part of this process, the formal process, we have notified all the tribal agency or groups throughout the state of of the study. They were aware of it in the beginning, and then they were offered the opportunity to review the purpose and need documentation. And then we'll have another touch point when we have a final study document as well. So.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. So we did complete some engagement at the very beginning when we were defining our purpose and need back in the fall of last year. And some of the issues that came up that helped define our purpose and need for the study was to improve safety along the corridor, better crossings, and access on and off of 52. There also was the need to manage access and congestion. So there's many access at grade access points along this in this in this segment that creates congestion when vehicles are accessing particular agricultural vehicles. So there was a need identified that there was important to maintain connectivity and crossing for these agricultural vehicles that access the farms along most of the corridor, which is majority of it is agricultural. And also to define a vision for the future. So Mindat is currently working on a project, the Southbound Reconstruction Project, that goes through a portion of the the study corridor. And then, you know, this remains, there are some at grade access points that remain that will remain outside of this Southbound Project. So really trying to work on what is the vision and for the rest of this quarter. So as part of the alternative development, we looked at different access alternatives, including the do nothing or the no build alternative. Some of the access alternatives that we considered were looking at, you know, changing the access from a full at those currently only two full at grade access, full movement access points along the corridor after the Southbound Reconstruction Project is completed later this year at County Road seven and at 165th Street. So from that or from what's remaining on there, we looked at different alternatives such as reducing turning movements to to either a three-quarter access, potentially J-turns, and then evaluating, you know, interchange options as well. So this is the no build alternative. I'm just going to walk through the we developed as part of the study eight access alternatives. So starting with the no build alternative. And again, this is assuming that the no build includes post Southbound Reconstruction. So I know that right now there's an active project right now. So the access that will remain or will be there after the project is complete is highlighted here on the on the figure here. So there will be a total of 15 access points consisting of a range of from full access, so all movements, median opening to to partial access. So as I noted, County Road seven and 165th are the only two full at grade access points that will remain. And then other than that, there'll be a combination of right in, right out, or or partial access from there.
So is just so I'm clear, is 440th Street? Going to only be a right out? Or is that 440th?
Be 1617.
Is it for? Yeah, I think it's 440th.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that will be a northbound right in, right out only. That's right here, right?
440th coming in from the west off of three.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yep, 1610.
Okay.
Right there. Yeah.
So this is the median right now.
That you're saying is.
Yeah.
My answer is.
This one, I think it has a median in there already.
Yeah.
Is that going away or is that not? That can be?
The median was main and it'll be just a right in, right out. So they can turn up from the north to go right. It's on the north side access. So it will, you can turn right off from the going northbound. And then from the south, you can take a right on to 52.
But you can't cross straight across.
Right. Because the median will be closed.
Yeah.
The median will be closed.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's our understanding as part of the Southbound Reconstruction. Yeah.
How far apart is County seven and 165th?
Less than a mile even.
Whatever it was. Each one has an energy.
Well, each one is a full access right now. Yeah.
Right now, they're just complete. They're fully open. There's movement in all directions. So you can turn left, you can go straight across. That's what Molly means by primary intersection. They're completely open. There's all accesses.
Yep.
That makes sense being less than a mile apart having two.
So that's kind of towards we're guided, you know.
That's yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out with this study.
So as part of the access alternative, you know, Mindat's desired spacing for full primary access where there's all movements is, you know, kind of getting towards that two mile spacing. One mile is is more of what it should be in an urban setting. So as you're getting, you know, outside of Zambroda, you want to try to get a further apart. So most of the access alternatives that we considered were more than a mile or going towards that two mile spacing between the full primary access points. Any other questions on the no build? All right. So then getting into alternative one. So I'm going to focus in here on the southern portion. That's where majority of the access is remaining after the Southbound Reconstruction Project is completed. So for all of these alternatives, one through eight, the assumption is that at 145th Avenue, which is a three-quarter access, so it's a right in, right out on the south side, and then you can turn left in from the northbound. Well, is the is a consistent and will remain the same throughout all the access alternatives? And then the same for 100 or 445th Street on the south side there. So that is another three-quarter access there. So then looking at what this alternative is highlighting here, which would it includes adding J-turns at County Road seven and 165th Avenue, and then closing access between those two locations. And then and that that's that's what this one will include. Sorry. And so any questions on alternative one?
We have J-turns less than a mile apart.
Yeah. So those are not a, yeah. So they've been.
Kind where you got to get all the way across right away.
Yep.
And then.
Yep.
Like they got in different places.
Not like the one at 66.
Yeah.
Where you get immediately into that left turn lane. Right. That's what these would be designed like. Yeah.
Similar to what was done on 61 coming off 18.
Yes. Yep.
Similar to that.
Exactly.
So they would provide, you wouldn't be able to do full movements at either location. You you would have to, in order to get across, you'd have to make that U-turn movement to take a right off. So combined, they create a, you know, the maintain that full movement.
Right.
So I just had some photos to highlight kind of what that would look like, a channelized right. So as you would come on from Southbound to County Road seven, you'd be able to, you wouldn't have to necessarily, you wouldn't be able to merge onto US 52. You could come right into that turn lane to make that U-turn if your desires were to go either across to get to the south side or go southbound. So alternative two then is a J-turn then at 165th Avenue and then a right in, right out at County Road seven. Under this scenario, there'd be some swapping of of the jurisdiction of the roadway. So as highlighted here, the so County seven is on the left side there. Under this scenario, the proposal would be to jurisdictionally transfer. So County seven would be where 165th is or where that blue line is on this map. And then the county current existing County seven would then become a township road. So just trying to align, you know, the county road with the the higher access point on 52, which would be that J-turn at 165th. So the swap would be made so that the higher functioning, higher jurisdiction roadway would be where where the access point would be. Any questions on alternative two?
So then you'd be changing 165th Avenue to the new County Road sub.
Correct. Yep.
Yes.
Yep. All right. So then alternative three then is kind of a hybrid alternative. So it's it it would be kind of like a split interchange. I'll have that. They're called high Ts. So so partial interchange at at seven. So and then one at 165th. So this is kind of a way to kind of provide a little bit of access at both locations. So on on at County Road seven, this is where there'd be a bridge that would up go up and over northbound at County Road seven. So that would be the free flow movement, if you will. And then County Road seven would come down and T into into the Southbound side of of 52, where there'd be a right in, right out, that would be stock controlled likely for access to go southbound. And then the northbound side, you'd be able to exit just like a an interchange would be. So you'd be able to exit at to go northbound on County seven or come from Southbound to get on to north or northbound, I guess, 52. So then the reverse would be at 165th. So this would be where there'd be a bridge up and over Southbound. So that would be the free flow movement. And you'd be able to exit just like an interchange or great separated interchange to go southbound or 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 get on get on Southbound from Sherwood Trail. And then there'd be a T intersection then for the northbound side. So. Uh, so that is that one alternative. And then there would be then access closures between the two partial interchanges and then a frontage road connection to to maintain that connectivity. So there'd be a, you know, combined, again, they would provide that full movement. So I know this one is the most probably the most challenging to understand visually. So.
Kind of.
Yeah. I apologize.
How do you come off the end of seven and go on Sherwood? You got to cross?
You'd have to.
You have to go south?
You'd have to go south on 52 and then make a right off then or exit off.
Exit off and on on 165th?
At 165th. Yeah.
Yep.
And then come back over on a bridge that would have to go over the river.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah. Yes. So that little black symbol on there would be the bridge that would cross the river. Yeah.
That's convoluted. To say the least, that's unbelievable.
Maybe preface that, you know, we tried to cast a wide net with these alternatives, you know, and all universal alternatives on the table, knowing that there'd be likely several that would be removed after we did some evaluation. So. Great. So then alternative four is our great separated full interchange at 165th, and then all access would be closed then elsewhere on the corridor between those 145th Avenue and and 445th Street. So this would, you know, look like, you know, potentially a diamond interchange or some function of that, you know, similar to what's at Highway 60 and then on on the north side at Highway 58 at Highway eight. So this one then would provide, you'd have to add a frontage road connection then to maintain connectivity, get to get down with that access closure to the along the south side of 52. And then there'd be full access movement at 165th. Any questions on this one? All right. So then alternative five then is is kind of the flop where you put the interchange at County Road seven then. Similar situation, you'd have to provide a frontage road connection on the south side to maintain connectivity so that access could be closed then at 165th and then in between those two, between 165th and County Road seven. And then and then there'd be a full access at at County Road seven then.
Why would you need 165th to have access up there?
So there wouldn't be access 165th. There'd be zero access at a there'd be the only access point on 52 would be at County Road seven here with the.
Well, like the 165th, what's the traffic flow on that? I mean, we're cutting off so many township roads right now. Why would we give that need to give that one an F? There's just that much more traffic.
Well, there isn't. It's closed. So 165th could be severed. The the connection would be to get from 165th to the new interchange at seven.
Yeah, there's like a fronted, there'd be, there's like a, I can't remember the name of the road, but there's already a connection between seven and 165th. So that's the way that traffic that would be.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't totally go to seven now, but it goes to 52. But you would carry that through the south.
Correct.
Exactly. Yep. The sack or something. Yeah. Total severing of, of, yeah.
Yeah. So 165th at 52 would be severed and then would be connected to seven via frontage road on north and south side. Some of it using existing and the other side would be all new.
And that's kind of what I'm looking at. We have a lot of these township roads now that are just totally cut off. They got to go back to the next square, come back. So why are we providing? Because it's already there. 165th is already there. Or that on a drill, it's already there.
It goes two thirds of the way.
Yep.
Goes two thirds of the way. It's just a matter of building it a little bit farther.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
And potentially, you know, upgrading the what's existing there to be handle the higher volume potential. Any other questions? So alternative six then is shifting the interchange up to a new, brand new road connection here. If we were to, you know, take County Road seven and extend it just straight south to where it would intersect at Highway seven or 52, I apologize. So this would be in a full access interchange somewhere the the alternatives five and six. Under this scenario, because of the access or the the distance between 165th and this new access point, we are showing a J-turn here then at 165th just to provide additional access at at on to 52. So that vehicles then can get up and make that full get to that full access if they're wishing to do so. So under this scenario, again, there'd be access closures along 52 in frontage road connections to ensure that traffic vehicles on both sides can get to that full access point and access to two.
Seven down to 60 is how many miles?
From here to down here. Um, that's probably about six miles or so.
No, maybe three. From from seven to 60?
Yeah.
Two miles.
Yeah.
Two.
Two miles at max.
Then how about seven back up to eight?
Seven back.
The whole study is eight miles.
Yeah.
So from Hater to 60 is eight miles. Yeah. So it's like five, six miles back. Yeah.
Yep.
We not to, but why are we putting, if we have that much of a gap from seven to eight, what's the difference from seven to 60 then? Why are we putting so much emphasis on 165th? Is there that much more traffic flow than it was on 50?
Um, the if it seemed logical, there wouldn't be having any sort of R-cut here at our at County Road seven was too closely spaced. So this just provided another access point. There was some feedback from our PMT. And as we were developing these alternatives, just to provide an additional point for for some of the businesses and agricultural properties that are located on 165th. So they won't have to travel so far along a frontage road to get on to 52 or cross 52. That was the reasoning for just given the, you know, shifting that interchange up further to the north.
Well, plus you don't want to go up that hill. See other. So.
So I just got a question. So why would we have to greenfield seven across new territory? Why can't we, why can't you get past Stone Quarry Road and then bring it around and into 52?
So.
And then it wouldn't be as far to connect.
Yeah, kind of sneak down like this or something.
Well, there's, there's a farm place like right there. But there, this is all field. And what you're trying to do is you're trying to get to that point where the 52 is so much higher than the ground around it. Seems to me you could bring this over here without going all that new. And then this could connect up there. Wouldn't be as far. And you could get 165th disconnected. And quite frankly, our hope or my hope or whatever is to eventually get seven down and across and take 165th on the other side, 440th on the other side, 445th, and connect up to our county road that goes up to 60.
Okay.
And have that as the backing road for future business development on that side of 52 for for Zambroda Industrial Park. You know, to get to get this connection to come down, cross, come down here, and connect up to our, I think that's the right road. Our, 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 this is our county road there. And that gives this whole area of backing for for future development in Zambroda. But to to change seven that much, that gets, unless Mindat wants to spend the money, that gets very expensive. From my perspective, Goodhue County probably can't stomach that right now. But but that is exactly the right place to have that interchange. Because now any industrial development on the backside of of on the west side of 52, it gives them access going that way. Or if they're going the other way, they can go down to 60 and out to 52. But it really spurs development for the city of Zambroda on that side of 52.
So so what I'm hearing is maybe is shifting that to the versus leaving it at the current County seven point. It's it's of your opinion, maybe that the further north we go, northwest we go with the interchange, the better development.
Well, yeah. The, yes. Getting it up into that hill so that the interchange and you could do the loops on the south on the bottom side, not a diamond, because you're in the hill. And whether you put whether you put the loops on it now as an in a full interchange or whether that comes later and you just get it seven underneath there and we get it connected to 60, gives people access to Zambroda and allows us to cut off get more township roads from coming out to 52.
Yeah.
Because if the long range plan for Mindat is to get as much disconnected, then every process we do along 52 needs to get as much disconnected every time we do it.
Hmm. Yeah. So I think this kind of functions a little bit like how if it was at it was the if the thing, if the interchange symbol was shifted anywhere along the, you know, just around the seven area, if you will. It's part of the study, you know, we're, we're at pretty high level planning. So I think this could be it, you know, we haven't done any survey out there or any of that type of stuff. So the concepts are pretty preliminary. But as part of the future studies, I think evaluating things like you said, like the the grades and where the where the interchange would make the most sense, you know, if we get down to an alternative that shows an interchange at seven, whether it's, you know, shifting a mile each way or half mile or whatever, as long as it's in that vicinity of of that seven function, I think that's, you know, more or less what this one would show. I think the discussion of whether you need the R-cut or not at the at the 165th, that's, you know, maybe it's maybe it's alternative five or the one that shows it there and there's no R-cut and it's just a, yeah.
Best is if we can not put stuff in that we really in the future want to take back up.
Yeah.
Because you really don't want to leave it with R-cut. You'd really like to get rid of.
Yep. Yep.
So.
I think what this is, so like what alternative six is trying to show, and what the all the alternatives are really, they're very high levels. So keep that in mind, is what it's showing is that the interchange for seven is shifted north to try to take advantage of that grade. So that's really what this is showing is that interchange shifted north. Some of the details you're talking about, like the connection of seven on the north side. Yeah, we can, we can, you know, wiggle it around. However, it makes more sense. And some of that connectivity to the south and east, we can, we'll can certainly refine. But really what we're trying to show is advantage, taking advantage of that grade. The other one is really, I think it was five, right, is the interchange at seven, kind of where it is currently. And then another alternative with an interchange at 165th, kind of looking at each one of those comparatively. And then really kind of working out those details of that connectivity development and all of those as the as the alternative get further developed, we'll kind of let that all shake out.
Yep.
But really, it's kind of trying to look at that big picture. Where does it really function? Well, where does it meet our primary needs? Safety and mobility. Right? So are they needing those two primary needs?
And part of the evaluation is really looking at mobility from its perspective of the landowners that are the agricultural properties. And how do they get from, you know, point A to B, right across or on? And so where that interchange shifts is going to create more a longer distance potentially for, you know, the the property owner. I think there's a lot of what we heard at the open house in June was there's a lot of concerns from the the township residents of, well, now my my trip time, you know, I have to go four miles on my way or this and that. So we don't want to create any, you know, hardship on the on the property owners or the agricultural businesses that that need to get across 52 or get on and off 52. So that's where kind of the the difference in where the interchange is at where it's shown here or at seven or at 165th.
Well, you know, it's the last county road in Goodhue County to get disconnected from 52 with an interchange or whatever. And we want to get it right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we want to, we want to make sure that it really fits for future development around Zambroda. That's key.
Yep.
That it serves there where they say their industrial is going to expand. So, yeah. Some of the other ones, I don't think achieve that as well. This one seems like it does, but it will cost a chunk of money to get that connected across the Zambro River and down to our current county road. But that's the cost of getting development to happen too.
Yeah. But the compromise of, you know, the hybrid solution, if you will, maybe of let's, you know, split the difference of using some of the existing County Road seven Boulevard, you know, and then and then. split the difference of using some of the existing county road seven boulevard, you know, and then and then deviating a little bit quicker.
Trying to go across one seven, one sixty fifth and go through the R cuts. I I honestly believe if you connected one sixty fif- fifth up to seven and they could go through the o- overpass or underpass. They would be much happier doing that, it would take them less time and it would be a hell of a lot safer with farm equipment to do that.
So maybe we're talking this one now, if we just shift it, right, if we did.
Get it connected up to seven somehow, yeah.
If you provide a another alternative, so this is showing the alter- the uh interchange at hundred and sixty fifth again. Um but providing a over or an underpass and and, you know, we did some initial originally, I think we talked about this being an underpass as at the um last back meeting. We did some evaluation of the grades and whatnot, so an overpass actually seems to work a little bit, functional a little bit better, just given where the the grade is at fifty two at that location. So either way, I mean, you know, some sort of grade separation for the north-south traffic to get across fifty two to access the frontage road system on either side, so that they can get down to that interchange at a hundred and sixty fifth where there'd be full access.
Much trouble do we have turning the roads back to townships? Is that an easy process by the time we've made it to the meetings? It seemed to go pretty smoothly, but is that part of what you get involved in, Jeff?
It's all about talking with them all.
They don't like the project you're doing. They're not gonna like this back either. It's part partly that, we've been pretty good about getting our projects in line so that they understand and.
I think ideally you're trying to swap mileage more so and not give them more to maintain, so it's an equal, you know, difference, right?
And and we've talked about taking over four hundred, which would which would bring bring fifty over to the intersection at hater and connect it with seven. And some of that, some of those things to the to the driving public makes sense to them. Because I'm still going north and I don't have to go on gravel and I can get to this interchange, so they'll do it. You know, but if you, if you don't make those um changes, you know. And really, there's only a couple of township roads between here and Cannon Falls that are not getting disconnected in this process that we're going through. And most of them, or all of them, are dead ends. Which don't have another way out. The rest of them have a back way to get out or a frontage road to get out. But there's a, the one here, and I, I think there's, there's one closer to the Edgewood area around county road one. One or two. But we're making progress.
So final alternative then is just um showing an R cut then at a hundred and sixty fifth, and then the underpass at um or overpass at county road seven, or that new county road seven connection there. So um kind of similar to the other one that had a an R cut there um as well. So this would just be a slight deviation from. That one, so anyway, those are our eight access alternatives then, and as I um noted, we're in the middle of evaluating them currently right now with our technical team. The idea, uh we are hoping to have uh draft results of that alternatives evaluation to present to our project management team, uh hopefully later this month. Um and then we'll bring it in front of our our policy advisory or a project advisory committee then um October likely, and then the public from there. So um I do also want to note, um in addition to those access alternatives, we are going to evaluate some other corridor wide alternatives that could be implemented along fifty two, such as, you know, widening shoulders or adding uh rumble strips uh to to improve safety along the corridor. There is a a pretty high amount of crashes that are happening along the the corridor. Uh another, and other things that could be considered is maybe adding acceleration or decel- deceleration lanes to facilitate data access where there would um where it does remain on fifty two. Um finally, I do want to note, we kind of talked about this a little bit already, is in addition to those access alternatives, we're going to evaluate some system-wide connectivity alternatives that could be evaluated. So um Commissioner Anderson mentioned, you know, up here at county road fifty, potential, or the my understanding is the county's already in exploring, taking over ownership of four hundred street that appear and then turning back this this existing county road fifty um segment to the township, um so that this would become the new county road. Um what's not shown maybe on here, what we are continuing, we will explore is um, you know, these purple dots on this map right now are the the access alter- access points that will have some partial right and right out access mostly um outside of that, you know, middle section that we kind of talked about with those access alternatives. So these are mostly, you know, single access point residential properties. So what we're going to evaluate as part of the study is looking at, you know, is there opportunities to extend frontage road connections or just facilitate better access for these properties? I think a lot what we heard at the um open house again was some properties that, you know, after the self-bond project comes in, are now going to have these, you know, large distances they gotta travel to 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 get to point A and B, um because access has been uh reduced, so. So these are kind of, you know, maybe smaller projects that could be either included as part of this larger access change on fifty two or potentially something MINDOT could facilitate, um or the the county as funding is available.
And that same thing, that same thing, I think we talk about south of Zambrota. Because there's a county road on one side, on the east side, and there's a township road on the west side that we could if we took them over, we could maybe take off some township roads and they'd have a backing both directions there too. But that's MINDOT, MINDOT should help us with that.
Go up to uh, excuse me, if you go up to the four fifteenth street there, up towards the top, you see, like those two houses there? Is there going to be a something at four fifteenth or no? Is that, I know there was talking to J turn at one time or three quarter or.
There currently is not anything planned there, no. So that's one of the things that we're still, like Molly mentioned, so we're still trying to tease out some of the some of that low hanging fruit, maybe opportunities that we could do a little J turn or uh the frontage road that we could add to this local alternatives, that would be things that we could maybe potentially fund in the next few years to get done.
Because currently this morning, I drove from Wanamango, took sixty all the way to Zambrota, and it'd take fifty two back up to that last dot up there.
Yes, for that one helps, right? Yeah, and I I've had a couple of conversations with the superintendent and with um Hald, I think, is the bus company. Trying to find a good solution, and we unfortunately don't really have a good solution right now. I think where we landed was um, they're going to try to keep their yard open, so you can get in and out with the bus.
Still doesn't change the fact that I gotta put on.
No, no, it doesn't help your mileage.
But wasn't there something across at four fifteenth there?
There will be a J turn, yes, just between, so where where fifty is being cut off, the gray, the green dashed, and then the first dot. There will be a J turn just to the south of that last southern dot. That will be built this fall, it's just not done yet.
Oh, that's what I was wondering.
But not, it won't connect four hundred and fifteenth. It's it's, it's going to take your southbound fifty two, and you'll be able to do a U-turn to go back north or to access those three properties. I think there's a, it'll be just to the south of that last dot.
Yeah, 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 because I'll come up number eight then, come up and do that turn and grab those kids.
And you know, go south and do a U-turn, yep.
Yep, we're south on fifty two. So that one is being done as well.
That one will be done with fifty two, yeah, I thought you were talking about connecting four fifteenth to fifty two.
Well, that's actually four fifteenth is the data you're talking about, it being here, over there, nope.
No, further to the north.
Four fifteenth is there, but actually on the other side of the road is a four fifteenth way, is that, it's just.
Yeah, something, it's just a little chunk, yeah, and I think that's right where it goes. Yep, and so it'll be that and then the two residential parcels.
Okay, sounds good.
So from eight, how many do you narrow it down to your first time through?
Um so right now we're evaluating, so I um, we haven't gotten down to what that number is. Ideally, you know, we're hoping two to three, maybe four, that we can carry forward then as part of the, you know, find all these are the four that, or whatever that number is. Um that should be carried into the um the NEPA process. Uh but, you know, as part of the NEPA process, they're going to have to look at all the alternatives again. But ideally, the PEL process will streamline and say, well, we don't need to fully, you know, we can just update any data that needed. But, you know, take the same methodology and 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 go forward into um, you know, understanding that these are the four that are likely gonna be the ones that are going to come out of that, and then uh further detail evaluate them as part of that NEPA process, so. Um so ideally, that's kind of, you know, where we're going, it's not going to be one, and hopefully it's not more than four, so um. Uh as I I noted, we are planning for some more public engagement uh later this uh year or early next year, um we did meet with the township to in August um to kind of get their feedback on the alternatives, the eight that I presented here. Um they were super appreciative of our engagement, and we're very thankful that they're being brought along in the process. Um so I think that's a a a positive that's coming out of this, that we're getting a lot of engagement from Miniola, uh from uh Miniola Township. Um Wanamango Township is also a portion of this, you know, involved on some of it, but majority of it's in Miniola, so.
Is there any one of them that they said doesn't, they don't want at all?
Generally the J turn ones, yeah. Anyone that shows a J turn.
Anything that has a J turn involved.
That's right, I I was pretty sure that's what they'd say. And I see the, I see an interchange at a hundred and sixty fifth as being extremely challenging. One, it's all wetland. And two, you have a bridge not that far from fifty two that you're gonna I think you'd have to start going up right after that bridge to ever get over fifty two. I I just, that one to me is like the most challenging, that's more challenging than doing it at seven. Going up and over at seven. It's just, it's just too hard to make that work.
See, and that's part of that evaluation process, we'll tease that out. So once, you know, once we have, we have these really high level ones, now Molly's team has really drilled down into that. Not super deep, but down further to get a footprint for each one of these, and then that footprint is evaluated for all those impact impacts. You know, to see, and then depending on what those impacts are, some of those might just fall right out because the impacts are too significant.
Because what what happened at hater is super well-liked. Everybody is so happy with that, I haven't heard anybody complain about how that project turned out.
It's good to hear.
Which is, you know, and which partly was driven by the contractor saying, no, let's go under.
Let's go under.
You know, which made some of us think, let's go under down on seven, because we got the height on on fifty two, if we just move farther west, farther north.
And it saved money. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright. Alright, well, I I just want to know, we do have a, there's a project website out there um that MINDOT is hosting on their talk, uh let's talk uh transportation site. Comes here as project manager, Cindy Morgan is our public engagement coordinator from MINDOT. Um so if there's any questions, um but we are continually updating the study website with uh information about the study. Uh hope to wrap it up, early part of next year.
And then a year from then, we can do the construction.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Where are we going?
I'm going to try to get on the meeting for five minutes back to my office and then.